I'd like to call to order the Berlin School Committee meeting of November thirteenth. We have had our executive session, which we ended about whatever, ten minutes ago. So, we're working on the approval of payroll and payable warrants. And we have a consent agenda for minutes for October second and October sixteenth, open session. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So, move.
My second.
Was there any suggested changes, anything? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We do have a communication from a Reed Tyler recipient. A very nice thank you letter from Jillian Malloy. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. Petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. I seeing none, we'll move on to the reports. And I believe we don't have a C-PAC representative here this evening, so unless there's something we'd like to bring up.
Nothing new. They did the high rate fundraiser and raised quite a bit of money. I think it was a banner year for them, from what they're telling me. That was the only new news, we haven't had a meeting yet this far.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to the superintendent's report.
So, before I actually go on to my official report, I would like to welcome our new recording secretary, Christine Marshall. She has been hired to work with us for all three districts. So, I appreciate Christine coming on board and welcome you. She has a bachelor's degree from Assumption College, who happens to be my alma mater. Both of my girls are attending there.
And my daughters.
I should have put in that little plug. But also, she worked for Norfolk and Denham Insurance Group. And she also worked at Curry College with the admissions, financial aid counselor as well. And she's been home the last few years, working as a mom, staying home with her children. So, and I get to meet her beautiful daughter, Bridgette, this morning.
Yes.
When she came in. So, welcome and thank you for coming aboard. Also, I will start with the October first enrollment. I wanted to just really give a highlight of where we are with our school choice numbers and our overall enrollment. And I'm going to apologize, I had a time here for my voice. I hope everybody can hear me clearly. I promise I'll try not to cough. In regards to last year compared to this year, again, these are based on October one enrollments. You had last year, 214 students enrolled, that's including preschool. And this year, you had 224. So, there's an increase of 10 students. I would like to also mention that your increase in your choice students is by 11. So, your actual enrollment in your town itself is down by one compared to last year. So, but your school choice numbers are up by 11. So, you're on a positive roll, on a positive track. The school district started off with a nice positive year with everybody. Been able to see a lot of great things happening in Berlin Memorial. And so, the only thing that I would just like to advise to school committee is, for FY14, there currently looks to be, it's a little bit premature, but currently there looks to be about 15 students that would be in kindergarten for next year. So, I would highly advise school committee to hold off on offering school choice options for kindergarten for next year. Because right now, the enrollment does not look to be enough for two teachers. So, to have school choice option to then have for two teachers, an additional teacher, your school choice numbers will not offset the cost of that additional teacher. So, that would be my recommendation at this point. It actually would cost the district more money to have an additional teacher than to have school choice. And I'll talk a little bit further about that as I talk about the budget process. So, does anybody have questions about the enrollment itself? Hopefully, we'll do here. Do we know the year beyond that? Do we, I have a projection, does it go back three years?
I don't have it with me, but I think we go back up again to around 24 after that.
So, it's just.
So, we would talk about that.
Yeah.
This level.
Okay. And we'd want to talk about what we want to max the classes out at, at that point, at that level. If you can see this okay.
Do you want me to turn the lights on?
It might work out better. I always, I have to say, I always love when we have staff members in the audience. So, thank you for being here and parents, because it's when I'm presenting, I want you here. So, first, what I'd like to do is talk about the budget process itself. Each week, we started off biweekly, and then we got into weekly here most recently. The administrators, as a team, we looked at all of the budgetary needs. And we looked at the line items that, what we would require in our, in our budget preparation for the following year. And we also had to look into a lot of considerations for the fact that next year, sixth grade is going to become part of the regional agreement. The teachers at the elementary level, they submitted their resource needs, some aspects by grade level, to the building principal. And then, the principal determined where those needs should be met. And so, what we then did was, we met with Carol, for example, sat with Kami, myself, and Karen, and we, and also Palmera, the technology coordinator. And we reviewed each line item in preparation for tonight's budget. In preparation for the budget, we also wanted to look at your student enrollment. So, this is, if you look at the dark purple or the first column of each grade level, that is FY12. And then, you look at FY13. So, you can see that if you were to start, let's say, at the kindergarten level, that kindergarten last year at 36, this year in first grade is 32. Last year's first grade was at 20, this year's second grade, which is this year's second grade is now 26. So, when you look at those numbers, and then, I'd want to just quickly address some of the concerns that I have, is some of the classes, for example, if you look at your town enrollment, such as this year's second grade, you have two teachers at 26. But if you didn't have school choice there, their enrollment in the town is 19, which really could have had one teacher. So, you have to be very careful, especially in Berlin, it's a small town, of where you're going to go from year to year. And then, also, if you looked at fourth and fifth grade, fourth grade has 10 students in there that are school choice, that brought you up to 35. But really, at 25 is an actual, it's an okay amount to have as one classroom at that age. I wouldn't do that in kindergarten, but in fourth or fifth grade, that's okay to have 25 students. So, that right there is what caused an additional second classroom teacher. Excuse me. So, I think as we go forward, and we start looking at the numbers, we have to really look at the enrollment each year to determine whether we're going to have school choice. Because that could have impacted you when they were younger. But now, once you open it up to school choice, you're not going to all of a sudden tell students they can't attend anymore. Of course, they're welcome in our system. Once they're here, they're here. So, I think you need to just, and I, I love school choice, I think it's a great option. But you have to make sure that in a small school, it has a larger impact. Because it impacts your additional teachers. And in smaller school systems like this, you might have teachers that might rotate or roll over from one grade to the next the following year. You might have one class that's very small, so you might have one, like, for example, our kindergarten class next year will have one teacher. The following year, we might have one first grade teacher, but we might need two kindergarten teachers. So, one of those first grade teachers might move into kindergarten for a year. And we don't know, but I'm just saying, those are the kind of things that could happen over time.
Do you, you don't probably have the data from that, was it third grade?
Mm-hmm.
When they were in second or first or kindergarten? I mean, maybe the numbers for Berlin have diminished.
Well, I can tell you that the second gr, the third grade class, this, I'm sorry, it's the fourth grade this year.
Okay.
Okay, that has 35. That was when, when they were in the third grade, it was still 25.
Okay.
But they had six kids as were school choice. You have four more kids in that grade this year.
Right.
That are school choice then. Which, right now, since we have two teachers, those classroom sizes can be much bigger. So, you can school choice them in, but we have to think of what impact that will have up to the middle school and high school.
Right.
Because once they're in, they're in.
Right.
So. Kami, I'm going to let you talk about the other revenues beyond the general budget that we could give.
Sure. One of the things that we started taking a look at as we looked at the budget was identifying the other sources of funds that come in besides just the town's appropriation. The first item on the list was the school choice. The first column on there was, we looked at last year's, for fiscal 13's budget, they had a projected balance being about $352,000 by June of 2012. And in reality, we ended up with a balance of $422,000, which was good, gave us a little extra to have sitting there as students came in or the unexpected things came up. So, what we're looking at for what we planned and budgeted coming out of fiscal 13 to spend was $300,000 of that. We've estimated that another $200,000 will be brought in this year for revenue. So, at this point, we're projecting in June 2013 that we'd have $322,000 in the school choice fund. What I've seen in history of, we've also set aside a contingency, not using that entire amount for the budget, knowing that students could come and go, and that may not be all realized money until we find out in June. So, what I've seen in the past is that contingency was held aside for that, which has generally been about $50,000. The other revenue source that we've looked at was a circuit breaker, which is for special education students, usually high need, high cost. The balance is about $11,000 in it currently. And we had projected that it was just going to be about $10,000 in June. So, that was pretty close to where it was. So, that's available. The preschool program actually ended up revolving account, ended with a surplus. And what we plan on spending and bringing in this year, about even, so that we'll keep the same balance. We also bring in some federal and state grants for about $108,000 into Berlin. And the school lunch program is, tries to be self-supporting, but I know the Berlin budget actually helps support some of those operations as well. So, those are the other identified sources of revenue that we have coming in to support the school operations in total.
What's, I'm sorry, what's the difference between non-resident tuition and, what does that mean?
Non-resident tuition is for a special education student that we actually bill another town for.
Okay.
That we have that student here in Berlin School and provide the services for that student.
Okay. What I did was a four-year budget comparison for Berlin to look at where you were the last three years, and then, where we're projecting for FY14. Clearly, we're looking at a large decrease in FY14 because of the decrease of the sixth grade and an additional kindergarten class that will be decreasing as well. I'll go over that in the next slide. But also, I think it's important to know that the offset of this budget is also to help support the regional budget. So, it's not like now Berlin has this extra money. So, I just don't want to give a false understanding that now there's extra money there sitting. Because we don't have that extra money. That money is actually going to be needed to be allocated towards the region. So, it's just being shifted to a different department. And this shows you the decrease and increase in the budget. So, Kami, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. What we did was, we took a look at the overall change in Berlin's budget. We started with the current year's budget, with his fiscal 13's budget, which for Berlin is $2.6 million. We've estimated the contractual salary increases about $67,000. There's some other budget changes on other line items that were approximately $33,000. So, if nothing else had changed at Berlin, we looked at, it would be a budget request of $2.7 million, which is a 3.82 percent increase. We have identified staff changes regards to the sixth grade moving to Tohonto. Those staff changes and the related estimated benefits would be a reduction in Berlin's elementary's budget by $217,000, which would bring us to a preliminary 14 budget of $2.5 million, which is a decrease of by $115,000. One thing to note is, for the benefits for Berlin staff members, the benefits are actually on the town's department budgets, not in the school department budgets. So, what would also be impacted is the town budget would change. We've estimated would be $69,000 decrease. And what we've done at this time is identified the employees, and we, not knowing at which plan any particular person was on at that time, have estimated family plans, so that may be subject to change. And what we've also done is added an unemployment figure, knowing that some of the employees may be laid off and may not be rehired at Tohonto. And therefore, it would be unemployment cost incurred, that we've estimated at $46,000, which again, would be paid on the town's budget side. So, we've estimated the net total change being $139,000 decrease, when you account for all the Berlin department budgets, which would be a 5.22 percent decrease.
So, this is an explanation of the staff changes that we have identified. There will be a reduction of a sixth grade teacher, a reduction of a kindergarten teacher. Two paraprofessionals will be reduced. Your art, PE, music, chorus, all of those positions, it's a .1 FTE. And just so that you're clear, .1 means half of a day, is really what that .1 is. A .2 is a full day. So, it's a, it's a half of a day. Your .5 FTE is on the psychologist position, not the person. Just so you know that this is not considered a laid off position or a reduction of force. This particular person, the psychologist, is retiring at the end of this year. So, for a replacement will be an additional, will be a half position, a half-time position, not a full-time position. And the special education teacher also, we have our special education staff in our building. We'd be reducing a .5 position. However, your special ed teachers are certified pre-K to eight. So, in the high school, middle school, we're looking for a special education teacher. Because of the new regionalized agreement, it's kind of the loophole that if people are certified, they can move into those areas that are open. So, we're moving one of our special education teachers up into the middle school, high school, which then would cause an opening of a .5. What we're doing is, there's another person in Boylston that will also take a .5 in Boylston and .5 in Berlin. So, it's not somebody losing positions or reductions of force at that point. We're also looking at the reduction of a .5 principal. And then, we're looking at the increase of a .4 FTE for a BCBA as a board-certified behavior analyst. And what we're, the reason why we're looking at this position is, a psychologist comes to the table with needs for children to meet those needs through a developmental way of psychology. A BCBA comes through and looks at a child's needs in a behavioral way. So, having the two in your building at once, or simultaneously working together on reaching those needs of children who struggle with behavioral or disciplinary issues, this helps offset and balance. It teaches children the appropriate behavior while also being nurtured through the psychological way. It's a nice, well-rounded approach. Currently, we contract out for BCBA services. And although the person is fabulous and great, and Karen really enjoys the individual, the consulting service itself causes an inconsistency because when you consult with outside agencies for these type of services, they come when they're available, but it's not necessarily when the students or the adults need that particular person. So, by having somebody here and staffed on time, it is going to work out much better. So, the psychologist that, at Boylston will also become the part-time psychologist here. And the BCBA .4 here will be .4 there, and .2 at the high school, middle school. So, the psychologist will be working with the administrative team in hiring this BCBA to also assist to make sure we have the right mix and the right person for the position. An increase of .6 FTE for an assistant principal position, and .125 FTE for curriculum director. Reason why it's .125 is, we were talking about the needs of a curriculum director in the district. To have a full-time curriculum director is not, is not the appropriate mix that we need at this point in time in our district. It's ideal, but it's not realistic right now for various reasons. Carol and I spoke, and we'd like to have Carol be our .5 principal and .5 curriculum director. The only way we can do that is by having a .6 assistant principal to help offset and assist Carol in those administrative needs in the building. So, that's where we have the increase. So, the overall changes, I think it's important to identify this for all districts. Boylston has a reduction, when you add up all your FTEs for all three districts. Boylston has a reduction of 7.1 FTE, which FTE stands for full-time employment. Berlin has a reduction of 4.8. And Tohonto will be asking for an increase of 10.0. The overall reduction of all of that is still 1.9 FTE. So, I just wanted to clarify, because I think it gets overwhelming when you see Tohonto needing, 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 but not realizing what we're looking at, what we actually are streamlining in our elementaries that's actually offsetting the difference of the staff of all three districts. The projected changes, I don't know why it's glitching, I don't know if it's glitching up there, but it's glitching on my screen. Berlin, if you look at that $33,000 line item that Kami actually presented on her screen, the overall cost differences of that, what makes up that $33,000 is your curriculum supplies and materials. We have to align our ELA in math for FY13, they're identifying the needs of alignment. For FY14, we'll be purchasing what those needs are that have been identified for the resources. And then, in FY14, they will be planning for the science. And so, for FY15, we'll be purchasing the science. Also, there's updated software systems that we're looking to address in Berlin. And some of those are your student-based software systems. Currently, our report cards mostly are done by hand on duplicate forms. Some are able to use a disk and a software that way, but it's still an individual format. We need to have everything in a software system. We need to have it at one central location. So, any administration should be able to pull up the students' report cards at any time, guidance, counseling, we should be able to pull up any of these things at any time. Teachers should be able to see what's happening with their students. Also, there's a cost for, an additional cost for an out-of-district transportation increase for our student that goes out of district. So, that's, that's the majority of that $33,000. Yes.
I know that we'll be talking about very soon, our capital.
Mm-hmm.
That we'll be submitting.
Yeah.
Could the updated, to update the software systems, could that be considered technology?
Well, it's actually more of a software. The piece that they're talking about, the capital is more of your hardware.
Right.
More of your computer hardware. The software actually is more of your student support system. So, it's, it actually, and Kami can answer this better than I can, but in the financial aspects, it's actually two different line items. Just looking at two, your equipment is something that you look at, it's like $5,000 more on your equipment, pieces, and your hardware. So, it's a different, it's something to consider, but just so that you know, it's a different line item.
Right. Right. I didn't know what the needs were as far as hardware.
And what we're doing is, we're also getting a cost for these systems. And we're trying to, if you look at it, it's three different districts, the cost is more. We're trying to look at it as one public school system, with an elementary system and a high school, middle school system, so that we can try to get a break on the cost. They also look at, you know, if you have under, under 500 students, it's this much, a thousand, under 1,000 students, this much. From 1,001 to 1,500 students, it's this much. Because we're saying, yeah, we're in that category. So, that's what we're trying to do to get the best cost for the systems.
Okay.
So, when we look at the needs to be addressed in FY14 budget and beyond, we start off with our technology plan. Excuse me. In FY13, they purchased smart boards and iPad equipment. We got one cart, correct?
Yeah.
iPad cart.
With 20 iPads.
Yeah, with 20 iPads. And then, the smart boards, you would purchase three, is that correct?
For the first grade.
For the first grade. So, you know, we were able to get some of that equipment. But in FY14, we want to continue staff training on our new technology and equipment. It's one thing to get the equipment, but we have to provide training to our staff so they can feel comfortable with the equipment that they have. Also, new software purchases for updated website system. We're looking at the fact that right now, we have an iPass is what we use. It's very cumbersome. I've talked to many staff members that are not comfortable with it, or they find it very, how do I say this, they get frustrated with it, let's say, more than anything with the iPass system. We're also looking at our curriculum alignment programming and what we use, the student database system, the information system that I started talking about, and our emails. We currently use MechNet for our email system. We want to switch to, I believe, to Gmail, I believe is what we're hoping to switch to, Gmail. And the reason being is, for example, I have a laptop, which is great, and I can go home and I can do my emails, which is great. But I cannot email to anybody from home. If I do it, I have to do it on my phone. I can't do it on my computers. And it's because of the way the system's set up in MechNet and the way that it has to go, it has to go from MechNet, it has to go into an iCloud, it has to go into my Outlook, and then, it gets sent through. It's the only way it will work. So, it's not, I'm sure teachers have the same problem, some of our administration have the same problem. School committee, I know you've had the same problem. So, it's very frustrating. Emails are not as user-friendly as they need to be. The same with our website, we want it to be more parent-friendly, more user-friendly. So, we want to be able to update all of those systems. Now, given the fact that if we do that, we also have to provide the training and understanding of how the system works. Also, we want, we have yearbooks, the year, workbooks that every year, we have to replace because they, they're used for the kids. We're not going to photocopy them, that's not legal. We don't do that. We don't do that. Textbooks. We need some new textbooks to be purchased every year based on the different disciplines and genres. So if we look at our ELA and our math materials, some math materials have already been purchased to align with the Common Core. I know that Berlin and Boylston have already aligned the math and Visions is the math program that they use. But in the ELA for Berlin and Boylston, they're very different. They don't, they don't have a common thread for the most part. So they're working on that this year. They're determining which materials that they actually will need to use. They're starting to align their curriculum, starting to use their mapping. And then they'll be prepared for the FY fourteen to do some of the purchases for that. And again, in FY fifteen, we're looking at the science and social studies. So that brings me to professional development needs. It's very important for the school committee to understand that the professional development that's required by our staff is a lot of work that needs to happen. And I'm actually from the philosophy that if we as a district are moving forward and we as a district are asking teachers to understand this and we as a district have to train the teachers to know what we're doing, that would be our professionalism and our job. So Atlas Rubicon is a curriculum alignment tool that we're very fortunate to have been able to purchase. The teachers had their very first professional development on it on November sixth for about three hours to kind of get an understanding and a feel for it. They were then able to break up into groups as grade-level groups to work with their teachers and their peers from both elementary schools together. A lot of great questions actually came out of that opportunity in that time. But this year, they're going to be working on having more training throughout and working on their ELA in math. And they're doing what they call the first two tiers. They're learning about the first two tiers of this program. For next year, they're going to go a little bit deeper in understanding more components of that program and are going to work more collaboratively next year, again, needing that training. Also, any new technology that they've had in their building, they need more training on. iPads are great, but there's so many great things to do with them. Unless you give them training, they're going to spend the majority of their time exploring it and not actually utilizing it. So we want the exploration to happen, but you have to give them the training so that they can understand that exploration a little bit more. They also will be working on the alignment of the science curriculum because this year's ELA in math. The science Common Core will be coming out, they're supposed to be coming out in February of this year, which means we need to start looking at it and thinking about it. The science is going to become one of the requirements for the MCAS. It's going to be one of the pieces that is scored and utilized as one of the measures. It's not just going to be ELA and math anymore. We're then going to be looking at science. It's going to become a requirement once the Common Core comes out.
You mean for all the grades, not just the test?
That's right, for all of the grades. Also, the Massachusetts Tiered Systems of Support. Some people think of it as RTI or Response to Intervention. But Massachusetts is really looking at how to define your differentiated approaches and so forth. That's a piece that we need to do a lot of training on. And that's a multi-year training process. Your student support team process is very complex, yet it's very scattered right now with, everybody thinks that if a student comes into a student support team process, a lot of the end result is that the child's going to end up being referred for an IEP or special needs. And that's not always the case. So we have to do a lot of training and understanding. That has to be a lot of support that needs to happen, again, over time. The educator evaluation model. We are starting to do some of the training. We had some training on November sixth. We'll continue with that training this year. But next year is going to be the first year of actually implementing that educational model. So we need to make sure that people are getting some training and support throughout that first year. That's going to be a heightened anxiety of, what are they evaluating? What are they looking at? What are we observing? And, you know, the administration feel that already because we're doing the new model as administrators now. But they're, we're doing it and learning it at the same time. The data analysis and interventions within the classroom, that's huge. Once we collect data, what do we do with that data? And how comfortable are we with understanding how to interpret the interventions that need to happen? Benchmark assessment training. I'm forming study groups. I'm putting that out actually this week of who's going to be on my study group. The benchmark assessment is going to be determined through those study groups of what's the appropriate assessment we're going to do three times a year. We need to do that. That's part of the regulation. But we can't just all of a sudden implement it if we're not giving training on that. And then the student information support system software, which I just discussed, like the iPass. We might use, you know, different things, you know, that are out there. There's like Power School or GradeQuick or things like that, for example. So unmet needs for Berlin. Currently, there is no curriculum director. So in FY fourteen, I'm proposing that we reinstate a curriculum director, at least part-time, and that we hire a point-six assistant principal to offset that. And then that's it. Any questions?
I guess my only question is, since Carol's going down to point-five regarding her principal duties, why are we not doing a point-five for an assistant principal? Why are we doing a point-six?
Yep, that's a great question. The reason being is because if you did point-five to point-five, if Carol, let's say, thank you, if Carol, let's say, in the morning, was out in the morning and then, you know, we had the assistant principal in charge in the morning, and Carol comes back, the principal leaves, there's no overlap of discussion, what happened in the morning. So that point-one, which is really a half a day over a period of five days, is really ends up being about, you know, an hour or forty-five minutes. That's what that point-six allows that overlap time to Carol to work with the assistant principal so that she can catch up on what happened in the morning. Because the ideal piece is that if Carol could go into, let's say, every week she picked a different building to be into for a day in the morning to work on the curriculum, meet with the teams or whatever, and then she had those other two days to work on the curriculum development and what needs to happen in the morning, then she could do that forty-five-minute overlap and not have to focus on the building principal opportunity.
Can I just add? The slide that you showed with the professional development piece, that is what the curriculum director typically works on with the superintendent. So those are the types of things, pieces I would be doing for next year in addition to networking out to other districts as well to get a sense of what's going on out there, attending conferences and workshops and bringing that information back to, to the districts.
Because right now, we're only seeing what's on the internet or seeing, you know, what we see if I do go to a DESE conference and I happen to look at the curriculum component. That's the only time we're seeing what's happening new in the curriculum. Need somebody to be able to bring in the new pieces and to talk to us about it. And to leave the teachers wondering what's going on is not comfortable for the teachers either. You know, they need a go-to person when they have a question about curriculum or advancement.
I assume that you've explored as far as MechNet, that you cannot use that and do the things you were looking to do. And that's why you're looking at another company.
Paul is working on developing, he's developing a technology group. And they're going to be doing the pros and cons of all different aspects and trying to determine which is the best set. So I'm not sure if Gmail or Outlook or whatever would be the right piece. But like, for example, a shared calendar, we cannot share calendars. And as an administrative team, if I need to speak with Carol and I'm at central office, I need to know if she's in a meeting or where she's at and look at her calendar. The only way I can do that is through a Google Calendar. I have to do it on my iPad. I can't just pull up her calendar and see. She can't just pull up my calendar and see. So it's very important that we know where each other is, especially like Karen is in all three buildings, just like I am. Or she's also the out-of-district coordinator. I need to know if she's out in, I don't know, let's say, Maynard or Shrewsbury or, you know, Wellesley or wherever she is. I need to know where she's at so I know when to expect her to come in. So it's those kinds of things that right now, we have to go through a different resource to a different resource to get it. It's kind of like we're linking rather than just going directly.
I always thought that there was something we could do in order to be able to send an email from Paul, but no.
No, and sometimes it links in and sometimes it doesn't. And it's actually the system itself.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, good.
Any other questions? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Maybe I can ask during Carol's report, but it's, with the ELA and looking at Boylston, are you able at this point to use one or the other? Or you think you're going to scratch them both and go with something entirely new? Are you able to say at this point?
So I think at this point, we're doing a needs assessment. We're looking at what we have currently between the two buildings. And I think we have a lot of good pieces in place. Some are different, though, in the building. So I, at this point, I don't think we're going to need to, we're certainly not going to scrap everything. I think we're heading in the right direction. But I, but we just need to shore that up so that both schools have the benefit of those good, good pieces. So I would say not probably.
Yeah, what I heard on November sixth, when I started hearing some of the conversations that were happening at the elementary level, some teachers really felt comfortable or felt like they were getting good results with the product with one aspect of that ELA component, of the literacy component, where the other school was really frustrating with it. So they looked at to see which piece they're using. So there's some things that might be able to intertwine. There's some things that they're going to have to get other materials for. So whether they buy a basal and build off of it with what they have or if they can build a multiple different components, that's going to be what, you know, what the curriculum specialist and coordinator determine.
I think the most positive piece is that the teachers are anxious to spend time with one another and talk about these things. And they just have not had that opportunity to do that, particularly in ELA over the past several years. So I think it's a great chance for them to get together and collaborate, which is what they've been wanting to do for so long, so.
And one thing that did come out also on November sixth is the, and we found this out as we were processing through, is the Atlas Rubicon that we're using, they set it up as three different buildings. So they had it set up so that Berlin and Boylston couldn't see each other's mapping. And so that's being fixed so that Boylston teachers and Berlin teachers will be able to see each other's mapping and work together by going online and seeing each other's. But at first, we were like, oh, yeah, that's not good. That's like just doing more of the same. So it was actually a good exercise to do that on November sixth in the training because we were able to see some of those glitches and fixing it right away rather than, well, yeah, we were never able to. We don't want that to happen. So.
I don't know if you mentioned this before and if you can say it without being too much detail. You said you went over tiers one and two of the Rubicon software.
Yeah, so do you want to explain the different components?
Like, what are the first few steps, I guess?
Sure.
If it's not too involved.
Eventually, the teachers will map the curriculum using an understanding-by-design template. It's a backward design model where we start with the standards and we work down into the daily lessons. The teachers are going to be responsible this year for mapping the curriculum over time. So they're going to be using a pacing guide. They'll be inputting that. They'll also be looking at the standards that they're going to use for each unit. For example, in math, what standards would apply to each unit that they're teaching. And then the second tier would be the skill and content. They'd include that for the, for each unit that they're teaching. So that's as much as we will do this year. And then we'll add on to that next year. So it's an exercise in learning how to do that, how to actually go into the system and put that information in. And it also generates a lot of conversation between the schools to say, okay, where are we going to? How are we going to pace our year? How are we going to ensure that we hit all of the standards appropriately? Because I think one of the things that we've seen over time is that we're missing tapping into certain standards and that's impacting our testing scores. That's a piece of, I think, what's going on. So that will ensure that we have all of our important standards addressed.
It's interesting. You know, it'll be interesting to maybe even come and see it at some point in time.
Yep.
Because it's kind of hard to visualize. So somewhat, does it take maybe the place of like a lesson plan? And basically, you're able to see each other's lesson plans of what you're doing and how you're getting there, kind of thing?
Eventually, that's what, that's what our goal is. So that teachers in, for example, in first grade in Berlin and first grade in Boylston will be able to go into each other's lesson plans and share that information. You know, what are you working on? You know, how did that work for you? What could we share? What resource could we share together? In a way, we hadn't been able to do that before because we had, well, first of all, we wouldn't show the lesson plans. And that would be impossible to go back and forth. And also, two, you'd have paper copies of everything. So it would just be binders of material. And the curriculum is ever-changing. So you're always adding resources, taking things out, you know, making sure that you're current with the work that you're doing. So this is just a really much more fluid way of, of doing that. And Ruth, what you mentioned, we're going to come to you, the curriculum team's going to come to you in June, in, uh, June, in January and do a presentation on Atlas Rubicon. So you'll have a chance to see what, what it looks like. So we're starting on Thursday with the actual inputting of, of data. So we have teams set up, grade levels teams, certain days this coming year. And that's with math, and then we move into ELA.
That's leaps and bounds.
It's great. And then you're also going to see, they can also attach like links. So they'll be able to in a lesson and with their smart boards and everything, they'll be able to just go and sign right on, click onto their link, and they'll have their video or their link. So it's a whole interactive lesson that they'll be able to do. It's very exciting.
It is exciting.
Yep, yep. Great. You know, one thing I just, I did want to clarify because I think people get nervous about when we're reducing your music, your, you know, your, your related arts programs. I just want to make sure that it's clear. The programs themselves are not going to change. Okay, at the elementary school, it's going to be just like it always was. It's just because of the classrooms that are less that it allows for that reduction. So I just want to clarify that the program itself does not change. So I just wanna clarify that program itself does not change.
Okay. Uh, we're prepared, we'll move on to the Director of Financial Services. You have any? Go ahead.
We have a little bit of facilities update. Uh, we have a few things going on at the school. Um, first, I'll start with, uh, we had some mold reported in the cafeteria kitchen on a wall, um, that was behind a refrigeration condensing unit. Um, so the area has been inspected and tested, uh, for air quality. Um, and that was done in October twenty-fourth. The results of the testing have been reported back to us by the company on October thirty-first, um, with correction, corrective work that needed to be done, needs to be done. Um, we contacted a vendor who performs that work, type of work, and obtained a price quote to have the work done. Uh, the price quote came in last Thursday. Um, and because the quote exceeds procurement thresholds, um, it would require advertising and bidding timelines to now be met. So on Friday, I requested an emergency waiver for bidding and advertising requirements from the state DCAM office, um, so we could proceed as soon as possible, and once I get their waiver through, it usually takes twenty-four hours, so I expect it either this afternoon or tomorrow. I didn't hear today. Um, so as soon as I hear back, um, then we would be able to proceed. What would end up happening at that point is, we actually have contacted one other vendor already, um, to get a quote. And I've made the commitment to DCAM office that we would attempt to contact one other vendor and see if they could provide us a quote within a very short time-sensitive deadline. Um, and if they could not, then we would proceed with one of the two quotes that we had moved forward with that, um, so we could get that work completed. Um, in addition to that work, we've also followed up on, um, the roof leaks that seem to persist at the school, especially in the heavy rains the last couple of weeks. Um, there's a number of areas at the school that have had repeated leaks causing ceiling tiles to bow, um, and those ceiling tiles were removed. Um, some of the areas were identified on the initial roof report that was done in July, um, as immediate needs, and some areas were identified in the important needs to be addressed within the next one to five years. Um, the wet areas have been identified from the report with their associated costs to fix those areas. And those areas are estimated to cost a hundred thousand dollars at the moment. Um, I have contacted the consulting firm that initially did the, um, report and asked them to provide me a quote to supply us with bid specifications, um, so we could cure the necessary repair work. Um, and that would also provide construction management to oversee the work being done. And at the moment, I'm waiting for that quote from that company. Um, I've also contacted a second designer to quote on preparing bid specs and to oversee, uh, the roof repair work, um, as well as the boiler repair work. And I'm meeting with that person on Thursday, who's also bringing a mechanical engineer, um, so we can take a look at the boiler and get proceeding on that, to get bid specifications done and get that work moving. And the last item I have, um, is that the town received, uh, National Grid Energy Savings Proposal. Um, it's mostly to do with lighting retrofits. Uh, the work is about ten thousand dollars that, uh, National Grid has offered that they would offer a zero percent interest that would be paid back on our monthly electric bill over the next two years. Um, they had indicated that the cost of that project would be about four hundred and twenty dollars added to our electric bill for the next two years. And the potential savings, they've estimated at eight hundred dollars per month, so they're looking at it that there would be a savings. Um, my concern, looking at the paperwork that they provided to us, is there is no guarantee of the savings identified. Um, so I did not wanna put the district in a position that they may actually be paying more than they are right now and making that financial commitment unless school committee authorize that to be done, cause we would be making a financial commitment for two years. Um, and at this point, that hasn't been put in the budget to actually pay for that during fiscal thirteen. And at the moment, it hasn't been put in fourteen's budget either. Um, so I just wanted the committee to know about it, and if they wanted to proceed and move forward with that, we could do that. I just wanted the committee to know, and we need to make that financial commitment.
Any questions? Um, have we done this in the past, I believe, where there was about the same amount of savings? I think it was lighting that we did years ago. Anybody remember that, besides me?
Well, I'm new.
Look who I'm talking to.
The change in bulbs, was it the bulb changes?
Yeah.
I think it was about five years ago, I think, do you remember?
And the cost, I think, wasn't incorporated back into the bill, but there was a savings.
And also in the gym, we did.
Yes.
Did you, like, new changes in the gym? Yeah, that was about four, five years ago, I think, yeah.
So there was a savings, so in the long run, what you had, count, let me ask you this. If you had budgeted, let's say, ten thousand dollars, it actually would've cost you eight thousand dollars. So there was, I'm just saying, so there was a savings, but you had budgeted for ten.
Um, right, and then there was a cost to the change of the light bulbs or whatever. And so you weren't paying any more for your electric bill, you may have been paying less.
Mm-hmm.
I've worked on media, I've worked with, unless you're not remembering. Basically, the lighting retrofit, two parts, there's the replacement of the ballast and the bulbs in all of the plants.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there is certainly old technology in all the ballast, but the light bulbs that they have nowadays are more efficient. So, I mean, receiving, saving two dollars and spending one dollar, I don't, you know, I wouldn't count on that. But getting the one dollar back that you're paying for the upgrade, I think you're, that's a pretty good bet. The other piece of it is outside lighting. You've got a lot of light fixtures which are broken, uh, and need replacement anyways. They're talking about putting LED light fixtures on the outside of the building, which, um, there's, that's, that's, that's the other piece that's in that package. Um, so, you know, those are not your street lights and stuff like that, unfortunately, but just the ones that are the wall packs that are on the backside of the gym and stuff like that.
So Kami, are you, are you comfortable with this?
I just, I, I looked at it, I'm, I'm comfortable with the work if the committee's aware that we would be making a financial commitment. And it's something that has not been budgeted, knowing that we have a number of other facility issues that we're gonna need to deal with. Um, for instance, the repair work to take care of the kitchen cafeterias in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars. We have some maintenance money put aside, um, so those are a number of things. So I don't know if we wanna take a look at the priorities and, or if we wanna go ahead, because it is a savings and, it is identified to save money, I'm sure it will save some. I don't know if it will save at the level of a commitment of what they're suggesting.
You don't have any experience?
I, I do, I do have experience that we've done some retrofits.
Okay.
My experience has been that you don't save what they tell you you're gonna save, you're gonna save something, um, but not what they're guaranteeing, or they're, they're not guaranteeing, and that's why they're not guaranteeing it.
Right.
Um, but they are suggesting what you would, you would save something. Um, but it is a four hundred dollar a month payment that we would be making for two years.
Just doing the calculation of the load on the, on the fluorescent lighting, there's a, about fifteen point three percent saving there. And that's, I, I've looked at that level of detail on that.
So, maybe, would you like to make a recommendation, or?
Well, I like to see whenever there's an opportunity for, for cost savings. I agree with Kami that it's not guaranteed, so you have to kind of weigh it out and kinda take your chances. But I also like the message that we're sending to our energy audit and the resources, um, that are trying to also assist us in trying to be more green and be more efficient. So if this was, let's say, my house, and I, I would be taking a chance on my house to do this. But in the long run, I think we're just sending the right message of trying to do it. That would just be mine.
There is also another whole benefit, basically, you're getting your whole school relamped and all new ballast, so you're gonna have less maintenance costs for things that are just maybe failing due to their twelve, fifteen-year-old age, whatever it is now.
Ruth?
I was just gonna say, maybe not a savings, but at least to break even, it seems reasonable. And, um, with what you're saying, we're probably gonna be spending money on fixing things anyway, so I get, I'm comfortable with it. I, like I said, I don't know if we're really gonna make money on it or save money on it, but I'm pretty comfortable.
That's kind of how I feel, too.
Break even and move forward in a positive way.
Angela?
And my only question is, um, is this something for the energy company or whatever that you need, you need to make a decision on now? Or is this something that's offered forever, or you can do whatever?
They usually offer, for a period of time, if you don't sign on, then, then you have to wait for the next round of when it would be offered to be available. Um, not knowing when that would be. Um, if it helps also, if we have to make an extra four hundred dollar payment on the electric bill for, um, presuming the work was done in between now and June, and we start, I mean, now in January. Um, if we had to pay six months, that, that would be about twenty-four hundred dollars additional expense for fiscal thirteen, um, that we were planning on. Well, it would give us an opportunity to look for a few months also if there was some savings that we were seeing. Um, and if that's not the case, take a look at fourteen's budget and identify that we need to possibly budget for some of that payment. Um, cause then we'd have twelve months needing to pay for it, so that'd be an extra almost five thousand dollars in fiscal fourteen of what those payments would cost us, if we weren't realizing any savings. So it would give us a few months of history to know that going forward, but knowing that we would be bringing that forward to the town to pay for that if we need to, if we don't realize the savings.
Are you, um, comfortable, I mean, we do know about this, like you said, you wanted this committee to know about this.
Mm-hmm.
Would you prefer to have another conversation with, um, Mrs. Goldman? And, you know, take it from there?
I can, I just wanted to make sure that it, that's where I was proceeding. They, they wanted me to sign the documents, I said I wanted to make sure the school committee was aware of it, and they were comfortable that I wasn't making the commitment on their behalf and not knowing.
That sound good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Kami, there is one other piece to the agreement funding, which has to do with the automation controls in VMS. And those would overlap with the boiler work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and you didn't mention it, so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Okay.
I, I don't know the state on that, cause I, we haven't had a meeting in a while, but.
Thanks, Bill. Let's see here. Are you all set, Kami?
I am.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the principal's report.
I wanted to start this evening by taking you through the school improvement plan, just giving you an update. This is, um, the completion of year one of the two-year plan, and we'll be bringing you our new school improvement plan next October. So just to kinda give you an update in each area of the school improvement plan, which I think you have in your packet, as well as a summary report from me. And I'm hoping that you have a copy of the survey that we sent, okay? So the school improvement plan, just as background, it's always designed with the assistance of the school council, um, who advises me in the areas of curriculum and, um, just, uh, always that we can improve the culture of the school, um, as well as the, the teaching and learning in the school, and how we can reach out to the community. So we have representatives from the community, on the council, as well as teaching staff, and also, um, parent community. I've had a wonderful school council every year, certainly the faces change, but we were really consistent, I think, in following through on, on, um, a shared belief in how we see Berlin Memorial School. We've been trying to capture that in recent years, really, with the development of a mission statement, um, at the end of last year, and also, uh, at the end of, I should say, the spring of last year, and now looking at a vision statement for our school. I know that's something on a larger level that Nadine is gonna be looking at with the, with the different towns. But we also want to have some input into that as far as what we see on the level of teachers, parents, and community members, because I know there's, there is a certain culture that we wanna be able to preserve, but also move forward to give our children the best learning opportunity that they can. So this year, we're looking at a vision statement, and what the council decided to do, we start to craft that by putting out a very simple survey that you have a copy of and sending that during the, uh, parent conferences, so parents would have a chance to complete that during the time they were sitting there waiting for the conferences, or send them in to us to give us feedback. The, um, the survey, uh, we have somebody who's, who's collating the data for us, and we'll have that available at our next school council meeting, and we'll have a chance to take a look at that. I don't mean to laugh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
For you. Um, and we're gonna use that information to really drive the vision, it, it, hopefully crafting, um, the belief and expressing that in our writing about what we, what we see are the important aspects of the school and what we wanna make sure that we move forward with in the next ten years, what we see for our vision of the school in the next ten years. So that's what we're currently working on, as well as we'll start to begin to, um, prepare the, the, um, school improvement plan for next year. And certainly, all the things that Nadine spoke about today in our budget are going to impact the direction that we're moving. So we're gonna take all of that into consideration as well. As far as the summary to date, in teaching and learning, um, we did initiate the professional learning community model last year for our grade level team meetings. We've had to somewhat alter that this year because of some other needs that came along, but we are continuing with that model through our staff meeting time, um, with tasks that the groups are assigned to work on, as well as continuing with the collaborative work that they do. In fact, we had our staff meeting today, and that's how that was designed, so that, um, staff members worked on their SMART goals for the year, um, sharing the data from the MCAS results to really drive, in a lot of ways, the work that they're gonna be doing and focusing on in a really meaningful way, a tangible way with benchmark assessments through the year that they can look at to help really improve those, those scores. So we spent a great deal of time with that today. Um, certainly, the curriculum alignment that we spoke about already, um, is going forward. Our social and emotional well-being, last year, PBIS committee developed a behavior matrix that we had, we brought to you. We did adopt the PBIS model for tiered intervention. This year, um, I've, I've asked that team to come back together again, we'll be having our first meeting at the end of November, and to follow up on the work we've already been doing with PBIS, to tweak what we need to, to see how, um, the tiered intervention process is working, to clarify some questions from the staff around, around those behavior models for each, each level, um, and to ensure that, that it's clear. Um, and we certainly have had questions, we expected that in the first year of implementation, that, that we would have some questions about how we're moving through with that implementation. We're also bringing on board, as I mentioned to you before, a data collection system where we can input behaviors and look at patterns of behavior over time, so that we can consider where we need to really, um, focus our attention on, on strategies for improved behavior. I think if we bring a BCBA in next year, will also help us, um, not only working with children, but also training staff to have other tools that they can use in dealing with, with behavior issues in the classroom, and just building culture in general, positive culture in, in general, and being proactive about that, which is a huge, huge piece of PBIS. Um, the other piece of communication, I know that's something when I first came here, um, there was a really, uh, strong cry for improved communication. And over the years, we've added certain pieces along the way. I know my staff has been terrific about getting newsletters home to parents. I've, I had asked them to send home newsletters at least once a month. Um, many of them do those once a week, and, and many more of them are beginning to post those online in their own websites. We wanna get better with the website communication, but I think working on some of the software system will help, um, teachers feel more comfortable accessing the website to put information on there for parents. I know that I had worked with Eloise, the town clerk. Um, last year, we were talking about making sure that that, my newsletters that are weekly get out to the community. And so I send them to Eloise at the end of each week, and she makes sure that they get on the town website as well, so we can reach out to some of the, the folks who may don't have children, who are just c- community members to see the good things that are going on at the school, and also let them know about events that are coming up. So we are doing that work. Um, Link committed a, um, their vice president of the organization last year to be the liaison with the, the newspapers and to try to get us more, um, exposure, I guess, in, in the local newspapers. I'd like to see that improve for next year, I mean, she's tried sometimes. It's the timeliness of the paper and when, when the events take place, and also their resources as far as getting reporters to come out. A lot of times, the individual that we have in place is writing the articles, and so it's a little challenging with the time constraints. But she does, um, work with Patricia and, um, getting photos online. Patricia's been great about getting events and photos of the children posted on our website as well. So, so that's, that's, that's been very important. Let's see, uh, technology, uh, we, as we mentioned before, we've outfitted a kindergarten class with a light speed technology that'll, that is a speaker that the teacher wears around her neck, and, um, children with, um, auditory difficulties can hear more clearly. That kind of gets rid of that white nu- noise that they may experience. So that would be our last classroom from fourth grade down that's, um, been outfitted with that. We also purchased SMART boards for the first grade classrooms, and then, as we said before, we have twenty. The library that Patricia Anderson is so gracious to coordinate and is the keeper of the iPads. And, um, so we wanna make sure she gets, uh, trained on those as well. And we're planning to do that in the, in the next coming one, so she has a chance to get as familiar as possible. And she's going to work with the children, not only in being able to access information on the iPads, but to learn to use them properly, because that's, that's really important, that they first learn to use them properly and put them away, take them, handle them before they get moving on the real. And they.
They don't really get to.
They don't like it to take.
They don't get to take them out, actually.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we, we took.
Keep her tight, we're just gonna, it's usually the teacher will.
Oh, because of the ti- turnaround time for.
Yeah, but it's just too tight, just getting them in and putting them in.
Oh, oh, the actual tight into the car themselves, oh, okay. Whatever works best, right?
It seems best.
So can I just, on, on the technology too?
Sure.
I just wanna clarify, the light speed sound systems, the FM systems, use it not just for kids with auditory, um, or, you know, maybe, um, that type of a need, daffiness? But also in auditory processing, able to understand what they're hearing. Kids with, um, emotional disabilities, kids with ADHD, impulsivity, behavioral disabilities. That type of technology, um, there's research that shows that those types of issues actually decrease and learning increases by the use of those systems. So it helps a variety of students that you just used to be, well, I don't see a hearing need, or I don't see a clear, you know, that used to be the reason for those, but there's a lot of research out there that shows those types of, um, technology devices actually cause students to focus more on what the teacher's saying. And it's an amazing impact in the classroom. So it's great to see that the classrooms are starting to utilize them and have them in the classrooms.
And the final piece, of course, is the academic performance, which has been our concern. I know, I, I do take to heart what we had talked about earlier in the year when I did my presentation on the MCAS, and we are taking a serious look at, at the, the gaps we have in, in the work that we're doing. And as I've spoken to you about before, I think in part, part of it has to do with not having a, a curriculum aligned, not being able to look at some of the standards that, that have typically kind of plagued us, I guess, as far as, as doing a better job. It's interesting, as, as we're folk, having the ability to focus more in these areas, that now we're going to a shift with the Common Core standards. that now we're going to a shift with the Common Core standards, which changes the priority of, and changes the standards that we are looking at for each grade level. So there's a total shift with that. And then eventually, the MCAS will be phased out in place of the PRC exams, which are coming down the road very quickly. So in just a couple of years, our children will be taking that PRC exam in place of the MCAS. So we will be looking at a totally different, not totally different picture, but certainly a shift from what we've been...
Is the PRC exam something more that's done on a federal level, since three states are doing the Common Core?
It will be, yes.
It's for career and college readiness is what they, that's really good. It's looking at how prepared your students are beyond school.
And there's a real drive now to have those exams taken online. That's the goal down the road, is to be able to have the children get online and take those exams. So we are nationwide, I mean, the districts that are saying, you know, how do you actually do that? Everybody has to be up to speed on your technology, which is certainly a challenge for school districts everywhere. So, but we're just watching. That is coming down the road, so we're mindful of that as well.
It almost feels like it's rolling down the road at 80 miles an hour.
And we're holding on.
That's kind of what it feels like, but it's coming.
Yes, it does, yeah. I have to say, you know, when I have a chance to go out to other districts, we're, I tell my staff, we are in good shape as far as that. I mean, I think where we are moving forward and we may not be right at the front, but we're certainly not way in the back. We're moving with the group. And so I feel good about that as to what's going on in other districts. We're right in the mix. And that's nice because then we can share resources with one another across the districts as well, which has been a great help for me and to be able to share out with other people as well, so. So the next piece of my report, of course, is our upcoming events and events that took place. I just again want to thank everyone who participated in Veterans Day ceremony, which is always so special for everyone at our school. We had Representative Harold Naughton speaking this year. He came back again to join us. This year he brought a slideshow of his when he was deployed. And so that was very powerful for the children. They had a lot of questions when they actually saw him in Iraq and as he talked about some of his experiences there. And we also had, of course, Aubreyanville from the American Legion, always being wonderful and organizing. We have the color guard coming through and Vets Inc. to come and pick up the goods for the veterans. So we always love that program. So that was on Thursday, coming up, the annual second grade Thanksgiving play. Yeah, Angela's singing. I don't know, we're gonna, I don't know about that one, Angela, this year, but you may have to sing it anyway, even if they don't sing during the play. That's going to be on Tuesday at 2:00 PM. At 9:30 on Tuesday, we have the fifth grade doing their energy fair. So that's always very interesting. So if you have a chance to stop by and see that, you're welcome to join the fifth grade and visit that event.
When is that, I'm sorry?
That's on Tuesday as well at 9:30.
Quite a day.
We're moving on to the business items and the bus brochure. Do you want to do this or...
Well, sure. Angela, do you want to talk about the bus brochure? I'll just say that the region did agree and they did vote on the provisions that pertain to the regional middle school, high school component, so.
Right, so now tonight I'm asking for the school committee to agree and approve everything that's pertinent to Berlin Memorial School.
Okay. I'd like to, I thought it was really a nice brochure, well-thought-out.
Lots of hard work.
Good job. Yep. So do I hear a motion to approve the bus brochure?
So move.
Anything else to be said? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
The next piece is the summer program job coordinator. This was actually posed back when Judy Valencourt was here as the PPS director. She had given some recommendations to the summer program coordinator. Even though the summer seemed so far away, it would just be great if this year we had the actual job description in place prior to hiring somebody. And so this came through as a first read. It's been approved by the region and we're just asking for Berlin to also approve the summer program job coordinator.
Okay, so this is a, just a vote, not a final, or is it a final?
This is, this is the final, this is, right, this is the actual job description for the position.
All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the summer program coordinator job description?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, anything, questions, anything to be said? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then the last thing I had on here was the, to reschedule the February 12th meeting. I will not actually be here that week, so I'm asking that the school committee think of another possible day.
Don't tell us if you're going somewhere nice.
I won't tell you then.
So usually around the 12th. Is there, what was the timeframe we will be gone?
I'm going to be gone that week.
The whole week of the 11th through the 14th?
Right. And I believe the 18th is our school vacation week. I don't know if you wanted to do it, somewhere around the first week of February. The fifth is...
Regional?
The regional. So I don't know if we wanted to do it. I know Wednesday, the sixth, is the Berlin Finance Committee meeting. I have that on my calendar, Wednesday, the sixth, at 7:30.
Is there...
So I don't know if that's anything where it's February. I don't know what you've done as common practice, if that's something that you would attend or wouldn't in February and not until later, I don't know what we do.
Usually we meet with the finance committee, we do attend or maybe just one of us or something. But we also have made the practice of, or had the practice of even meeting with them for, during, after a Berlin's committee meeting. So we might be able to sort of incorporate a meeting into that evening also, if you want to do that. Is the time written in stone with the finance committee?
You know, I have it, I have it here posted at 7:30, but I don't know if that's anything that's...
Oh, they usually do meet at 7:30, so that's probably the case. I don't know, what do you guys think? We have actually met at seven, done as much of the meeting as we could until they arrived for the meeting. Then taken a break, met with them, and then go back to the meeting.
It's up to you. I don't know what your best, your past practice has been, but I'm...
What do you think?
So is this the one they've requested us to meet with them at?
I don't know, I know it's in my, it's in my calendar.
For some reason.
But the one in March is also in my calendar, so I don't know. I don't know, like, you know, each town does it so differently. I just don't know what month you would meet with the finance committee to, over. Any questions, if February's the time, if March is the time?
I think it's just whenever they want to meet with us. I don't think it's been any particular...
I would imagine we could meet that night and then if, and then schedule it in. We can adjourn, go over there, come back, whatever. But they can wait, you know, as soon as they do the things, nothing more done.
It's usually pretty short.
Okay. Is it, is it possible, is it possible if we make 6:30 our meeting and then I can at least go till about 7, 7:15?
Wednesdays are not good for you.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
But I can at least go for 45, you know, half, 30 minutes to 45 minutes.
I forgot about that, I'm sorry, Angela.
That's okay. I mean, that would save you a day, one day of being out.
Yeah.
You know, otherwise Monday of that week is fine. I know Thursday is probably a link meeting and wouldn't be good for Carol.
It is, yes.
So I'd say either Monday, the 4th, or Wednesday at 6:30.
So we, I, I'm happy to meet at 6:30.
Yeah.
It works for me, so I don't know.
It's time with me.
Okay, what do we do then?
At 6:30.
So February 6th at 6:30.
Replace in February 12th, correct?
Right.
Yes.
And maybe be able to get done before 7:30, who knows?
We thought we'd get it like that.
I know. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Let's see, public or school committee comments?
I guess the only question I would have, with all the technology and pieces they were putting together, where would, I mean, I think this is a goal, not positive. Are we eventually look to collect student information such as like learning styles or any kind of positive kind of information you might pass on to a teacher for the next grade? Information like that.
That would all be in a database and it would be terrific because that would move with the child from year to year, absolutely.
So, but none of the particular softwares that we're looking at have that element to them?
What we have right now does not.
Okay.
What we're looking at is information like that that does. So that when, even when the students go from Berlin and go up to the hostel, that information's going up. Right now everything's in binders or paperback or, you know, it just doesn't flow. And teachers aren't always getting that information, they got to go digging for it. This is all going to be to their hands. So even if you had a student in first grade and now you're done, and now you're now a third grade teacher, you can go back from kindergarten and see what's happened in the progress of the student of the years. Because if you're about each a concept, you could even go back and see if that student's had an issue on that concept. Because you can go back and see the information. Or if a student ever got brought forward to what they call a student support team because it was a concern, you'll be able to go in and see the data, we'll be right there at a click of pulling up that student's name. And you'll be able to see all the information, the scores, the testing results throughout the year. Everything will be in that database. And right now that's not happening, they got to go here, they got to go there. It's a lot of time that a teacher has to spend. But right now they can go right there, they're spending, they can spend a lot of time, but they're at a time getting a lot more information than what they are right now.
Now, is this database or software to replace IPAS or is it something totally different?
It will be replaced here.
Okay, that's, that's exciting, too. Thank you.
Anybody else? Before I ask one? I just, I forgot to ask as we were talking about the facilities issues that we have. How are we doing with the facilities director? Have we hired one?
I actually advertised for the position. Cheryl, Sharon and I interviewed a number of candidates. I've narrowed it down to a couple people. And we're just doing some checks and trying to get back to somebody within the next year, so. So, have somebody shortly. Not tomorrow, but shortly. Yes, it would.
But not quick enough, Frankie.
Absolutely.
I know, I know. The other thing I neglected to do was, when we talked about the, and Nadine, I probably should have put the capital items on the agenda because it's supposed to be voted and sent through the capital planning by December 1st.
Well, actually, Cami's spoken to Dennis about that.
Right, they asked us if we could give information to them by early December. So I took a look at that, I made the commitment that, yes, we'd get it to the beginning of December, knowing that we could meet in December and we'd get it to them.
That was what I was going to suggest, because their next meeting is the same day as our next meeting.
We still have a special town meeting on November 28th?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you get your thing in the mail today?
I didn't look at my mail today.
Okay, yes. And so there are seven articles. We are number four. So there will be...
There were a lot of needs for the special town meeting.
Just some transfer, a couple of transfers of money. And then the ones after us, I believe, are more like, I don't know, planning board type stuff, so. Yeah, I just got this in the mail today. So, but, you know, I assume things would go pretty quickly for the first couple and then we'll be on number four. Yep. And it's at 7:30, so I would imagine by 8 o'clock, the latest, hopefully.
And it's November 28th.
Right.
And we just want to clarify for people that our request is, because the current amendment actually states that the sixth grade will go into the new building upon the opening of the new building. And they're going, that means that they'll be going in in January. And we don't want the sixth graders to go in in January. Sixth graders aren't prepared for it, the staff aren't prepared for it, the parents aren't prepared for it. Nobody is. So we're hoping to get this passed on November 28th so that we can have the students not go in to the regional agreement until the fall of the following year. So right now, I mean, they're going in, they're going to be a part of it. But the motion is to actually request that we don't have it happen until the fall. We already went through in Belston, it was a unanimous vote, actually no discussion other than an appreciation and a thanks that this was looked into. And it was unanimous vote to have that happen, so hoping for the same in Berlin.
Good. Okay, I think we've covered everything. Still need for extended session? Nope, okay, we did that before. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.